Good evening, everyone. Are we ready? We're gonna call this meeting to order. Um. Let's do roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Here.
Commissioner Hovey?
Here.
Commissioner Leeny?
President.
Vice Chair Lee?
Here.
Chair O'Blair?
Here.
Uh. Please stand. And Commissioner Leeny, will you please, in pledge of allegiance? Raise your right hand and your heart. What do you think?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Public comment. Now, this is a time when anybody can speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. If you fill out a blue card, you have a chance to speak. Uh, no action will be taken on that. But, uh, it could possibly come on a future agenda item if you have a blue card. We have any blue cards for comments?
No, we didn't.
Then we will move on. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? If there are none, then we will move on. Uh, alright. Consent calendar, item six. Do you have any comments or corrections or... If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Leeny?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair O'Blair?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Item eight, public hearing. Okay, we have two today. Our first one is item eight point one. It's a major development review and conditional use permit. Um, two of them. Gas station and alcohol sales. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Chair. Members of the Planning Commission. Tonight's presentation will be given by Erin Lobliner.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission. For your review tonight is planning application PLN eighteen dash two zero zero four one, which is for the constr- a major development review for the construction of a Chevron gas station and a convenience store and for a type twenty alcohol license for the sale of alcohol for off- I'm sorry, beer and wine for off-site consumption. So, the proposed project is located at the northeast corner of Schleisman Road and Hamner Avenue in the Hamner Place development. The applicant is proposing to construct a three thousand two hundred and twelve square foot convenience store and a- with a three thousand four hundred and seventy-two square foot canopy that will be located at the northerly portion of the site. And, uh, access to the site would occur through through the driveway located at the Westerly's portion of the site, um, from Hamner Avenue, as well as circulation through Schleisman and, um, sorry, going, turning north, uh, between, uh, adjacent, between the shops that are located to the east of the site. And these are elevations. This is the southerly elevation, which is from the front of the store. Uh, the, the proposed store would use a combination of stucco as wel- um, as well as stone a- as an accent. This is the Westerly elevation, which is viewed from, um, which is from Hamner. This is the Esterly elevation, uh, would technically be the view from shops, and the northerly elevation. One of the things to also add is a cross se- uh, we wanted to show is a cross section, which this shows the di- the great difference between the proposed site and the residences located to the north of the site. Uh, there will be a landscape bit buffer that is set up between the existing residences and the proposed C-store. There's also landscaping located on the Westerly portion of the site between the proposed store and, and Hamner as well. So, one of the, for the major development review, one of the major conditions is that the, uh, all pedestrian connections must be well illuminated and defined with u- with colored concrete and papers. And now, talking about the, uh... So, this, uh, this is an elevation of the, of this, uh, proposed gas station island, sorry, as wa- showing the fuel canopy, as mentioned before, which is south of the convenience store and the convenience store as well. And I think the, my pointer just decided to stop working. So, the proposed, uh, for the alcohol CUP, the alcohol facilities will be located at the rear of the, of the convenience store, which is in line with recommended conditions of approval from sheriffs. There will be four cabinets for, um, that will contain the, where the alcohol will be stored. There we go. And within city limits, there are thirteen locations that have been issued a type twenty or twenty-one license, which is for off-site consumption of the thirteen eleven or south of Belgrade Avenue, which is basically the central city where the pe- where the majority of the resident population is located. In talking with ABC this afternoon, the propos- the census tract upon the site is located hasn't, would be allowed a maximum of four licenses. This actually would be the first within the site. And so, therefore, this, um, this pro- if this project if approved would not create an over-concentration of faci- uh, of facilities within the, within that census tract.
Excuse me. Say that again. This site? They figure there'll be four granted?
In the census tract.
In the census tract?
Yeah. ABC, uh, bases the amount of, um, licenses by census tract. This census tract basically begins at Schleisman Avenue and goes south to, basically to the river. And within that census tract, there be, can be no more than four. At that point, then ABC determines it to be an over-concentration of facilities.
And from east to west? Where is it from east to west?
Uh, the first, the first major north-south street in Harupa Valley, I forgot the name of it, but... And then, moving west, I believe it's to Sumner.
Okay. So, Pat's Ranch Road, maybe? Is that what it is? Or Wineville? Something like that?
You mean as far as the, the Esterly boundary?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to consult the map again to, to...
It's alright. But it's on the other side of the freeway.
Correct.
I'm sorry, con- continue.
No problem. So, as far as the major conditions of approval for the alcohol use, we would be putting a site minimum size, uh, restriction for beer and wine bottles. So, it would be a twenty-two ounce minimum for beer and three hundred and seventy-five milliliters for wine. Uh, beer and wine storage must be located at the back of the store, which is, as, as is currently proposed. No advertisement can be displayed in the store, in store windows or outside of the store. And employees must complete the state mandated alcohol sales and training. And a security system for the convenience store should be installed and maintained. So, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the major development review for the development of the Chevron convenience store and the gas station, as well as the conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol for, uh, beer and wine for off-site consumption. And that concludes staff's report. Available for any questions the commission may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff at this time?
I do.
Okay. Commissioner Charleston?
Okay, so, I, I really wanna expand on what, uh, the chair was asking. So, if we have this census area where we can only have somebody of what we think that they'll approve by the ABC, we know there's a hotel going in. We know that Heroes is going in. We know there's a potential for another hotel going in. So... It seems like we're gonna be using these up pretty quickly.
Not, uh, not necessarily, 'cause there's two different, there's different types of licenses. For Heroes, for example, most restaurants use either a forty-one or a forty-seven license.
Consumption on-site only.
Correct. And then, businesses for off-site consumption, usually like a convenience store, a Ralph's and stuff, or a Walgreens, for example, that sell alcohol usually use a twenty or a twenty-one, which is for off-site consumption.
So, that will be, um, there's four of those type that possibly are available?
Yes. So, in the, in the concept that typically for, if there's an over-concentration of the twenty or twenty-one licenses for off-site consumption, in this case, if there's more than four, that can, that would be considered an undue concentration by ABC. Technically, in order to, for a city to still approve a, a, a facility that wants to do that, there would need to be a can, uh, a finding of public convenience and necessity, which, to my recollection, would need to be, uh, can, um, made by the city council.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Lee?
Um, just out of curiosity was included in the staff report, but, uh, what kind of outreach or engagement have, uh, the applicant done in regards to the residences that are nearby?
For that question, I would have to defer to the applicant for that.
That during the...
Okay. That, that's fine.
Any other questions? No question? For staff? Do you have any questions for staff?
One more question.
Okay.
So, I'm trying to recall what we did before. But I believe there was some kind of item that was brought to us on this particular site before. If I'm not mistaken? But, yeah, if you can answer that.
So... Um, I have a question. Um, they don't really show where the, um, the fuel station is for the tanker trucks to come in to fill. They don't really, they're really not too clear on that? Do they, do they... Does that show us where that'll be?
Yeah, there will be three fuel tanks that are located. Let me go back to the, to the site plan.
So, I was thinking about it.
Yeah. So, if you see the, to the left of the fuel, uh, to the left of the fuel canopy, there, that's where those fuel tanks would be located, the, the three kind of, um, ellipticals. They're getting larger.
Truck will park just about right over that. So, you have no, um, figures on the distance between that and the residents behind the store?
No, we do, we do not have that information with, um...
Or the distance between the, the pumps, the canopy and the pumps, and the distance to the residents? Do you have that figure at all?
Um, we can, we can look that up and provide that for you. 'Cause I know that the, let's see, in terms of the section to the edge, it's over sixty th- so, it's over sixty-three feet from the ba- from the rear residence to the back of the store and additional forty-nine feet, I believe. So, all in all, we're looking at about over, over a hundred and ten feet. So, well over...
To the front of the store, right? To the front of the store.
Correct. So, it's sixty-three feet from the rear of the residence to the back of the store. The store itself is about forty-nine feet in depth. And then, so about a hundred, over a hundred and ten feet from, from that res- nearest residence.
To the front of the store?
To the front of the store.
Well, I'm talking about from where they fill the tank, the tanker fills the gas and where the pump stations are. That's where I wanna know about, not the store.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Um, okay. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Can staff answer my question?
So, at the beginning, when the Hamner Place was originally filed, there was outreach, but there was, there was, uh, consideration for a, uh, conditional use permit for alcoholic beverage sales. However, at that time, there wasn't a, uh, site plan that was indic- indicative of who the tenant was going to be or the site plan for planned elevations. And, um, so at that time, the application was withdrawn.
Okay. Commissioner Hovey?
So, um... This whole site for Hamner Place, it was approved or it was, um, something was approved so that there could be a gas station here on this site, but not specifically where on this site. Is that correct?
And the...
So, like, nothing was approved for the gas station to be specifically at this location?
Yeah. Correct. That's what we're doing. Uh, the environmental document, however, did say, uh, analyze a service station. So, what you wanna do is their companion documents. We have an environmental document that's overreaching, and it's indicative of all the different types and uses that could be at the site and the configuration of those uses. And then, tonight, um, just like before, with the hotel came before you. So, the EIR covered the hotel. Then we came before you with the major development plan review and the CUP. So, that's what's happening this evening, uh, for another site, is, uh, the service station with the CUP and the major development plan review.
So, is there another site within Hamner Place that could possibly, um, also have the gas station? So that it's not backed up to our residence?
Uh, good point. The answer's no.
No. So, if we don't approve the gas station there, then the gas station cannot go on Hamner Place at all?
Well, the EIR document does allow a gas station at the site, but it still has to go through approval for you. So, if you didn't allow it at that site, I suppose the applicant could try to utilize another site, although the geometrics of the site doesn't lend itself readily towards another location. That would, that would be the ideal location for such a service station.
Okay.
Quiet.
Thank you, Commissioners. At this time, then we'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Do you have any blue cards? Or should you want to hear from the applicant first? Do that? If the applicant wants to come up and make a presentation, be welcomed.
Good evening, Chairman. Commissioners, my name is Gary Semling with Stantec Architecture, the architect representing Chevron for this project. We also have a couple other people that are available to speak tonight to address any questions that you or the public may have. Rick Manners with Lewis Development is here, and he'd like to make a little, um, discussion after, after we're done. Uh, we have Sergio Leneris, who's with the Chevron development team over there. We also have Joanne Williams, who is the business consultant for this area. She's a Chevron employee that manages the stores. And she has a couple of her staff with her, who are the local managers, um, within the Eastvale area and a little bit beyond. So, um, just to back up, uh, we did, I think it was about a year and a half ago, come in and submit for a use permit. The idea was, we were doing that kind of as a group with all of the Hamner Place businesses so that it wasn't a piecemeal, um, process. And, you know, and I, the Commissioners rightfully brought up the fact, well, we don't even have a site plan. We don't know what the Chevron station's gonna look like. So, what we did was, okay, let's pull that out. And when we make our MDR submittal, we'll make our use permit submittal. So, um, we made our MDR submittal to the city. You know, we've been working with planning staff for over a year, trying to come up with a Chevron station that, that looks great on that corner, that, um... Something that the city would be proud of. You know, this is not just your Chevron station where you have the big blue fascia panels. You know, what we've, we've worked out trying to simplify the canopy. We, uh, canopy signage, the image. We tried to tie the convenience store into the other businesses, uh, architecturally, with the stone materials, the colors, the parapet heights, and then tie our plant, our fuel canopy to tie into our convenience store. So, we have stone that goes all the way up to the top of the, um, underside of the canopy. We put a standing seam metal roof on top of the canopy that matches the entry to our, um, convenience store. And, um, you know, we've really... I, I don't know if, in the presentation, they showed the perspective. Erin, did, did you have the perspective of that street corner? I mean, I think that, if you look at, we have some... Man, so this doesn't have the Hamner Place feature. I mean, I, maybe you've seen that?
They have seen it for...
Okay. So, from what that looked like a year and a half ago in the perspective, yeah, all you saw was this big Chevron canopy. And what we've done is really downplayed that canopy, really increased the landscaping at that corner and really with screen walls and tried to, uh, make it a much more, um, pedestrian and customer-friendly, uh, intersection. So, um, it, I know there might be some questions on training of personnel. I'm kinda moving on to beer and wine sales and twenty-four hour operation. We have people that are experts at that that can address all the training that Chevron gives their employees and has to have on an annual basis. And one other very important point I wanna make about this project is that this is a Chevron-owned and operated store. Uh, it's not a mom-and-pop operation. Uh, Chevron is a, a, a large retailer in the state of California and the, the, the west coast. And they take their responsibilities to heart. And, um, if there's any questions you have for us, uh, we're available. Uh, we agree with all the conditions as proposed in the, uh, for the CUP and for the, uh, project development.
Thank you. Do you have another representative that would like to speak? Hi. Could you please give us your name and the company you're with, just for the record, please?
Excuse me. I'm Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Rick Manners with Lewis Retail Centers. Happy to be here again. Just wanted to go through a, a couple of questions or comments. Um, you know, when we started this project, our original approvals for the overall site, the, the overall components of the overall site, I should say, um, that was approved July of two thousand and eighteen. And since then, uh, as I'm sure you're aware of, we have been able to land Stabridge Hotel, who, in the hotel, they'll have a rooftop bar. They'll also have a banquet facility with rooftop patio. So, we're very excited about that. Um, Heroes, sports bar, of course, you know about. We think we'll have one of the best-looking Starbucks to bring to the city. Um, and then Tony's Chop House. We've been able to land them as a tenant in one of our prospective shops buildings. And at this point, we're also talking to two other wish-list restaurants, um, sit-down type. So, we're in negotiations with a couple of those restaurants, hoping to bring them in as well. And, uh, back in two thousand and eighteen, I guess my only comment to that is we're, we're very excited about where we've been able to get since two thousand and eighteen, um, on that list of tenants and what the project is shaping up to be. Uh, in two thousand and eighteen, when we were going through those approvals, as Gina mentioned, the EIR did factor in the gas station at the current northwest corner, at that location. As far as community outreach, at that point in time, we did, um, of course, the, the normal notification. So, all the, uh, current residents knew what was coming and when the hearings were. But we also did a community outreach, reach meeting. And we got about fifteen or twenty people to show up. Everybody was very positive about the project. Chevron was discussed. The alcohol license for Chevron was discussed. Um, at that time, because of the situation with the MDR being pulled back, we explained that and explained it would be coming in later. So, here we are today. But every comment, every resident had nothing but positive responses at that point in time. Um, we also, because of the ninety-nine cent store situation with New Life Church, uh, we also were in contact with the pastor. I spoke to him personally about the Chevron and their alcohol license. He had no issues whatsoever. Um, and if I recall at our actual hearing on our approvals back then, there were no real comments to the alcohol gas station, um, coming into that site at that time. So, I just wanna kinda reiterate all of that. In the current MDR before you, as, as Gary mentioned, you know, they've been working with staff in the city, uh, for almost a year. And we think, as a developer, as them being a tenant on our site, we think they've come up with an outstanding design here. Chevron in conjunction with Lewis and conjunction with the city. Um, in that collaboration, we've also come up with the corner grand entry statement, which I'm sure you've all seen. I guess we do, or we don't have that rendering?
We can, we can get that. Uh, because what we've done is, um, when you're doing this analysis, this was site-specific. So, uh, the remnant, the drawings for the actual entry were weren't included on this one. But, uh, we can get that for them. But I see you already have it, so we can...
So, if, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Um, if you flip to the second page, what you see there is the, what we're calling the grand entry statement. So, uh, part of the, um, process we went through with Chevron, with staff, and back when this started, you had a different set of planning staff. So, the conversations began with them, but more recently, they were taken over by the current staff, Gina and her crew, which we're thankful for. But anyway, we worked quite hard and quite long with Chevron, with the city, to develop what we think will be an outstanding entrance to the city. And you can see what, uh, that element tends to do is, uh, from the corner, as you're entering, say, if you're going east on Schleisman, if you're going north on Hamner, as you come to that corner, you really won't notice that there's a gas station canopy or a gas station convenience store behind that. What you're really gonna focus on is the streetscape, the landscaping, the entry element itself. So, we're not saying that we're camouflaging, um, Chevron, but we do think that that provides an outstanding streetscape. And also, in that package is the southwest corner of the site, down by the Silver Lakes exit onto Hamner. Down at that point, there will also be a community ID sign, which is for the city. Um, and that corner and that landscape treatment is indicative of what'll continue along the whole stretch of Hamner. So, what you'll have is, we think, an outstanding streetscape, north to south, all along Hamner. Schleisman continues that as you come into the site. Schleisman continues that as you come into the site, you go back all the way to the civic center. So all in all, we think that's, with Chevron the corner, with their design, with our components included, we think it'll be an outstanding project. So we look forward to your approval. Thank you.
Are there any other representatives that would like to speak? No? Do we have any cards?
Yes, we have one from Betty Wu.
Betty Wu?
Hi, commissioners, staff, the public. My name is Betty Wu, and I'm one of the residents in Eastville for seven-plus years. Well, someone's memory is very short. Over a year ago, I was in the same meeting when was it, Miss, whoever, this Mr. Rick something, in the meeting, and I remember I spoke to against the alcohol license for the Chevron gasoline station, even though he doesn't remember, but I do. And at least three of the original commissioners were still here, two were new, and the whole staff were completely new, they probably don't know or wasn't aware. But I have the whole history here also, and I remember. But I'm not going to go too much further or waste my time. I'm going to just cite some of the job downs that I did quickly. We, the residents of Eastville, actually many that we spoke with in my neighborhood, people are still earning a hard living and still working to support their families and paying the property taxes and the loan mortgage payments, so they cannot be here. So I'm speaking on behalf of them. We, the residents of Eastville, oppose Chevron Gas Station and its beer and wine sale license at Hamner Place. The proposed gasoline station's location is too close to the residents. Allowing a new gasoline station in the populated residence area is enabling a new threat to the immediate neighborhoods. It's literally as same as planting a time bomb next to residents' home and old yard and waiting to explode one day. Underground gas tank leaks, smoke generated by idling gas refilling trucks for a long time, new traffic bottlenecks and delays at the intersection, et cetera, can make the Schleisman northeast corner the worst place for a new gasoline station. And it is also adjacent to the residents, and this is also making the residents to have increased disasters like major car accidents or fires and the smoke, like air pollutions. And these effects are triggers for the homeowner's insurance rate hikes and property value declines. In addition, currently, Eastville residents are already well-served by enough gasoline stations that provides better price and incentives both on north and south sides of the Hamner. If the purpose of this new gasoline station is to serve the visitors of Silver Lakes and Hotel, then it only makes sense this gasoline station is moved or placed to the southeast side of the Hamner Place, which it will be removed or far away from the residents. And that way, if there's an internal entrance from the Silver Lakes, people, the traffic can be also directed directly into, from Silver Lake into the lot, rather than coming out to the Hamner and then going in, which it will create new bottlenecks in that already congested area.
Okay, Mrs. Wu.
Okay, my time is up, but let me finish the last statement. It's just, I just want to beg the commissioners listens to, listen to the residents outcry and outweighing the life and the property safety over over the city's revenue or whoever's finance benefits.
Ms. Wu, may I, if I may, I want to ask you one question. You say you were speaking for the residents of Eastville. Do you have any signed affidavits or petition or anything?
Not yet, but I think many of them sent individually also. I do not know how many.
Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to see if you had any.
Actually, at least one more in my neighborhood, supposed to be here, but she has a closing deal tonight.
You don't have any affidavit, signed affidavit?
Not yet, at this moment, but it can happen.
Thank you. Yes. Any other cards?
No, but for the record, we did receive twelve comments received via email, which have been sent to you via email and also provided for you at the dais.
Can you tell us if they were opposed or in favor of the gas station? Or is?
They were all in opposition.
All in opposition, and how many did we have?
We received twelve.
Twelve, okay, thank you, just for the record. Okay, do we have any questions for applicant or staff, any commissioners?
I do have the responses to some of the questions that you asked earlier.
Pardon?
I said, I do have the responses to some of the questions that you asked earlier today.
Do I have any?
I do.
Okay. Then if there are no more blue cards or speakers, I want to close that public hearing then. Public hearing is now closed. Okay, you have some answers?
Yes. So the total linear distance from the back of the property lines for the adjacent residential housing and the canopy, which is what I believe you asked for, is one hundred and eighty-seven feet.
Hundred and eighty-seven?
Yes, sir. And the eastern boundary of the census tract is actually Wineville, which is, like you said, on the other side of the freeway.
And the fill station for the, the fill station for, the filling, filling area for the pumping trucks to come in is pretty much in the same area as the, as the canopy, right? So it's about the same distance. Okay, do you have any other questions or comments or?
I have questions.
Okay. Go ahead. Sure, certainly.
Okay, so when I, when I look at this, I think we do, I think they did do a nice job designing this, but I think it wouldn't be fair with a lot of the other businesses that we've been up against where we said, the emphasis on the front is always the emphasis everybody puts on. The front always looks really nice. In this case here, what I'm a little bit worried about, I'm also worried about the east side, because the east side's going to face other businesses, but the west side that is facing Hamner, I really think we can do a better job making that look nicer. You see a utility door there, I see a tree there, I love the cultured stone, but I still think we can break up some of the, not, even if we take and put false windows in, just something, we did that at the bank. We've done it at other facilities where we make it look more closer to the front than the back, because people don't like looking at the back. It's obvious that it's a place to load and unload stuff, and that's what I get from this. And if you're going to drive by from Hamner, I think we can do a better job with that. That's my main thing. The other thing I was a little bit concerned about is six AM to two AM for alcohol sales. I'm not quite sure who's coming and grabbing alcohol at one o'clock in the morning. That's the best thing they should be doing at that time of night. So if we were to say yes to this, that just seems a little radical when most of the businesses in the city right now, except, you know, grocery stores and 7-Elevens that are open considerably later too. But the fear was, and this was a comment that was made when we talked about Heroes. And that night, we did talk about Chevron, and we did talk about alcohol being served a year ago. And the comment was, who's going to come out of Heroes at eleven o'clock at night feeling pretty good, but were cut off because it's closing in an hour, walk over to Chevron and get more alcohol, and then drink and drive? And I'm not saying that we can be the police for people. We, you know, I partake in alcoholic beverages, but it's up to, you know, I don't know how far we go to say we need to try to stop something like that. I just know we need to be careful with it, and we don't want to make it seem like we don't care. So six to two seems a bit late in the night for me. I have one other question there. Oh, no, the other question you guys answered, Aaron did a good job answering, how many other alcohol permits we have in the area? It didn't show it in the packet, it showed Goose Creek, and then a blank page, and I'm thinking, you know, it said twenty-five listed with only one shown there. So the packet was a little empty of that, if you were going to try to make a comparison. And in the past, we've done it to where you've given us a project and then gave us a chart. And I would say from here on out, as we start using up our ABC licensing, we should probably have a overlay of where all these other places are every time we look at alcohol sales, just to make it easier to read and study and figure out, you know, do we have a concentration here or not?
And an outline of the census tract that it was involved in?
That would help.
Commissioner Lee?
So several questions. You know, now, that brings back some of the memories about the outreach and some of the proposals that we had in the past in this development. I think the outreach component of it, I am kind of concerned, because now I remember that we asked for outreach to be done on that commercial, commercial location, and you guys didn't do it, so that's why you guys went back and did the outreach. I think I remember that. Now, if that's the case, then why not do a little bit more outreach with a gas station? I'm kind of surprised that you guys haven't asked any of the neighbors with a gas station proposal when we asked you to do some outreach with the commercial retail development that was proposed. So again, I think, I don't really buy the idea that everybody loved the gas station. I think there's a little bit more to do on that part, because frankly, I can't imagine a person living right next to it, you know, those four lots that's there, for those homeowners to be, oh yeah, I'm glad Chevron's coming right behind my backyard. Right? I mean, so I think, I think it's, you kind of owe it to the community to kind of at least, it takes five minutes to go, go there and just knock on the door and ask them and just talk to the residents. You know, it's four, it's four lots, it's not that difficult. And we've asked that, and I've given staff a heads up on making sure that that, that message gets relayed to, to, to the, to, to the applicant. And I'm surprised that that wasn't done even prior to this meeting. So first of all, that was, that was a huge red flag from my part. Another, more of a technical question would be, why have we, so we're, we're thinking about all these aesthetics, and I've asked this question several times in many of the other developments, why not locate the building budding the public right of way, on Hamner, right next to the Hamner Road? Why are we orienting us so that it's budding the residents? Why not do it on the public right of way and hide the pumps from the public view? So, you know, I, I don't know if that was ever considered, but if you can answer that question, that'd be great. And, and then the renderings, I think my, my main concern is, okay, the rendering currently is good, but it's not really showing the access point that you guys have there, which is right next to the Schleisman Road, which is kind of concerning. Also, you know, not only with the, with the gas station, not only will there be some of the Chevron signs, but I believe there's going to be like the gas price signage there. And none of the renderings show that signage and how, how that visual impact is occurring in the site. So I don't know where those signages are going, but I think those are gigantic lit-up signs. So if you're concerned about aesthetics, I feel like that's, that's a major piece that's kind of missing from the rendering. So those are, if you can, if the applicant can kind of answer some of the building orientation questions, some of the technical questions, that'd be great, if I may, sure.
Can you hold off right now, and we'll finish with questions? Commissioner Laney, you have any questions or concerns?
Yeah, just one second. Commissioner Lee's remarks regarding orientation. Yeah, I understand that gas stations need to be well-lit, obviously for safety, but I'm just thinking, if I'm, if I'm one of the folks that backs up next to this gas station, I see these renderings that show these huge gigantic mature trees. I don't want to assume that mature trees are not going to be put in, but I'm also hesitant to think that it's not going to take at least a decade for these things to block this gas station from, from view for the folks that live right next to it. So that, that's just one of the concerns I have regarding the proximity of this, of this gas station to the, the folks that live right behind it.
Commissioner Hovey?
I would echo Commissioner Lee's comments about the orientation of the, the gas station, but also, my concern is primarily with the location of the gas station budding up to our residents. Our number-one goal is our residents, making sure that they are, are okay with our decisions. We are residents of Eastville. And I feel that putting the gas station there diminishes their property values. And, and I feel that it's our responsibility to protect our residents. And as a resident myself, I would not be okay with a gas station right behind my house. Those homes are not new, they've been there fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years. I know that they were being built when I bought, and that was eighteen years ago. So, you know, they've been there a long time, and for now, for this to be put in, I, I think that it's a problem for the residents who are living there. So I don't think that it was not an issue for them when you did your outreach. And again, with Commissioner Laney's comments about the trees, I did look at the renderings and, I mean, I'm, I live by McCune Park, and if you look there, there isn't really a large tree there. And that park has been around for eighteen years, and it just, they just don't grow. So even with a decade, I don't know that, I mean, we just don't know around Eastville which properties are going to have trees that grow really large and trees that don't. And so again, it's about the residents there and protection of them. I'm just not sure that this is the right location for it. It is a beautiful building. It is, it is very nice, I'm just not sure that that's the right location for it.
Thank you. Let's see, I have a few things. I know our residents are concerned about a gas station being in their backyard for several reasons, and I have concerns myself. I didn't see anything about, have there been any tests on monitoring gas fumes emitting from the site or light pollution? And I, this is a twenty-four-hour gas station, and it's going to be lit up all night long. I know we have buffer trees there, but like I said, that's going to be decades before they're big enough to, to filter out any light and noise with automobiles going in and out. I live somewhat nearby there, and I live back up to a large, or a main arterial, and the noise from the automobiles driving by, it seems like, excuse me, the residents of Eastville like loud vehicles these days. And I know they'll be driving into that gas station at all hours of the night and not afraid to wind up their motors to be as loud as they can. But, so I have concerns about it, and if those could be addressed, are there any devices that are going to monitor gas, monitor gas fumes that come out of that location? What are the safety devices to ensure that, that the gas pumps are going to be shut off if there's a fire or an earthquake or, or there's an accident and a car runs into a gas pump? You know, these are all the kinds of things that the residents are concerned about. Their safety is our biggest priority. Our job is to make sure that their development doesn't come into the city that's a nuisance or a danger to the community. And, and because of the location of this project to close proximity to these homes right behind it, I have a concern about that. If it was somewhere, anywhere else, I mean, this would be a beautiful thing, and I wouldn't have any concerns, but I would hate to be living behind it and smelling gas fumes all day long, every day. And so if you could address that right now to the commission, I'd appreciate it. And so at this time, I'll open public hearing again, so if somebody wants to come up and address our concerns, they can feel free to do that. The applicant and his people?
All very good questions, and I think I can give you some answers to most of the questions. I'm just going to start at the top of the list as far as the west elevation. Of course, we can make things work out, that's, that's not a problem. We really did try to make it foresighted architecture and not just emphasize the front elevation. Beer and wine sales, six to two, I have to defer any changes to that, to Chevron. So as far as putting the building on the corner, and maybe it'd be good if we could have a, see a site plan. I thought we sent a presentation to the planning department so that we could maybe address some of these things, and it really did, it didn't get included. So, go, because some of these specific questions I have answers for. Yeah, go to, the landscape plan would be good.
Go up, there you go.
So if light and sound and noise are the biggest concerns for the residents, I think placing the C-store building where it's at is the best thing that we could do. Because if you were just to flip that around, all the light, all the noise, everything from that fuel canopy would go straight to those three or four homes to the north of us. I mean, otherwise, you're just blocking Schleisman from the dispensers, that's fine, but you're opening all, everything up to the residences to the north of us. It doesn't make sense to, I, I think that building that's nineteen to twenty-foot tall, it's, you know, sixty feet long, is probably the best block of sound and noise and light that the residences could get. I mean, the residences are, I think, from the back of our building to the property line is twenty feet, then it slopes up, there's a CMU wall there, that's fourteen feet. I think just from the property line to the front of the dispensers is probably a hundred and seventy-five to a hundred and eighty feet. The disp, the fuel tanks to the left of the canopy, that's where the tanker comes in. He'd come up Schleisman, kind of do a U-turn, they always unload on the right, so they're away from traffic. They don't, people aren't, that's the least traffic circulation area in that entire site plan is where those tanks are. So we thought that was a great location to put the tanks. Concerning about safety, the state of California has the strictest regulations in the United States. All those tanks are double-wall fiberglass tanks, and all the fuel piping going from the dispensers to the tanks is double-wall. All the vapor recovery lines, which I'll talk about later, are double-wall. Everything is double-wall and it's monitored, especially the tanks, they have a brine solution in there, and there's a reservoir that if there's any leak, any change in that, it sets off an alarm, it shuts everything off, and the station can't operate until it's inspected by the Chevron maintenance people and turned back on. But they just don't flip the switch, it's not a light switch, you got to go through a whole process in order to do that. The safety of dispensers. The safety of dispensers, and it, we had some photographs that we could show you that apparently there was a Chevron station in San Diego just this last week. They got, the dispensers were hit, ran over by a car. And what, at the bottom of each dispenser, and this is a state regulation, there's a shear valve there, so that if, if it gets knocked off, it's, it's anchored down anyway, but if it did get knocked off the ground or an island, that shear valve shuts off gas, there's no flow. It just can't go. It's instantaneous. And it's very similar to if you're filling up your tank, and you got your hose and you're distracted and you pay and you drive off, there's a breakaway in that, that fueled hose so that it, you know, the only fuel that's probably lost is whatever's between that breakaway and the nozzle. It, it shuts everything off so that you cannot, you know, gas doesn't just keep flowing out of the, the dispenser even if you pull the hose off. And it also prevents you from pulling the dispenser out of its location. Vapor recovery, concern about fumes. You know, the state of California has two stages of vapor recovery, and this is, you know, it started out as phase one and then phase two, and I've been doing gas stations for thirty-five years. And so stage one is when a tanker comes in and starts filling up the underground tanks, they have a second hose that's connected to the, each tank, and all the vapors that were in that tank get sucked back up into the tanker itself, and then those go back to the refinery and get recycled. They condense down, so that's kind of the big, you know, volume of, you know, you're not just filling up a big underground tank and all the vapors are flying out. It's all closed circuit. And they have the same situation now called stage two vapor recovery. So when you're filling up your tank, all the vapors that were in your vehicle's tank get sucked down into the underground tank. So it's continuously a closed loop, and there's even now a, kind of a third thing where it's enhanced vapor recovery, which I can't really explain, but I know it's even more evolved so that the state really, if you're in an area like the Bay Area, Southern California, where vapor recovery is very monitored, it is, it's virtually hardly anything that, that escapes if, if at all. So, and then, so I, I hope I addressed a lot of that. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and we had photos...
One, one more thing about the vapors. Is there's any kind of sensors, monitoring gas fumes escaping from the area, anything like that? Do you have anything like that?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
No, I mean, because I, I'm sure the system is tested on an annual basis to make sure that it's working, because they do test to make sure that this, because they're all closed systems, whether it's the primary piping or the secondary piping, it's tested on an annual basis, so I guess, but there's not a sensor that is smelling vapors.
Yeah, like something that would be attached to the building or something that you can monitor or plant somewhere near the homes, so if there's gas fumes escaping and they're heading in that direction on a constant basis, that it would pick it up and give some kind of warning or alarm?
Not on a, not on a normal retail basis that I'm aware of.
Okay.
The companies would not put that in, but South Coast could if there was a complaint that there was odors or something.
Sure, and I think of...
It could be done in what you're asking.
Yeah, near refineries and things like that. I'm sure that they do that. I know they do it because that's what their job is, is to monitor those heavy. The other thing I wanted to bring up was the safety of gas stations. My office is up in Petaluma, up in Sonoma County. We're thirty minutes south of Santa Rosa where the Tubbs fire was. And, you know, it devastated people in our office, you know, one of our IT guys lost his house, lost his car. And there was a huge fire, and there was an area that was near a shopping center, and there was a McChevron, a Chevron canopy, Applebee's, a Taco Bell, everything was destroyed, everything. And I, I had a presentation that I could have shown you, except for the gasoline fuel canopy. It was left pristine. It, and what we ended up doing was putting a temporary kiosk so that they could sell gas, because there, this whole neighborhood was destroyed. I mean, I think like four hundred homes were destroyed, all these businesses, and the only thing that could operate, and it took a little bit to get it going, maybe a few months, but was the Chevron station. And it really helped the contractors that were there, trying to rebuild homes, people that moved back in. Yeah, first responders, it, it, you know, people are really looking at some of these gas stations, and where I've had my power shut off up in, in the Bay Area, where maybe we need to hook up a generator so that these gas stations can operate while everyone else has their power shut off. And that's another thing to kind of look at. So I, I hope I addressed your questions, and I'm available if you want clarification.
Any other questions? Outreach questions?
The, you know, the only thing I can say about that is that, you know, what, what Mr. Manners had brought up, I have not knocked on anyone's door personally, no.
Thank you. For the applicant, go ahead.
I just brought up the tree situation before. I just, I was just curious, I mean, what, what's the, what's the plan there? I mean, are you putting young saplings in there and expecting things to grow?
You know, what my lands, what my renderer did was went to the landscape architect's drawings, and I believe there's a legend that says, okay, this tree at a mature height is gonna be so tall, and that's how we drew that tree. I think it's a pine tree, if I recall correctly. And, because I looked at it too, and I thought, that's pretty, that's pretty tall. But I even talked to our landscape architect, and, you know, she said, yes, they can get that tall. I, I, I don't know the park you're referring to, but, you know, if they're watered and maintained and taken care of, I think they can, you know, it's, it's not gonna be grown, it's not gonna be installed that large, but I'm sure that they'll be at a pretty decent-sized box tree to grow.
Thank you. Go ahead. Give us your name and...
Serge Olinaris, I'm with CBRE. I'm the development manager for Chevron. I just wanted to address a couple, couple items that, a little bit reiterate what Gary was saying, but also address a couple of the other items. We did work with staff on a couple different options that we looked at for rotating the orientation of the building. And just like Gary said, you know, this is really the best option for those residents that are behind, behind on the north side to block the sound. The building's actually about twenty-four foot tall, as well as adding all the landscaping behind that helps buffer any sound and light that, that escapes from the area. And, yeah, putting the canopy, the building between the canopy and the residence is the best thing to do for the lighting and the sound. And as far as the fumes go, if you have the, the gas smell, the fumes escaping in that, that much to what you're referring, kind of carrying towards these residents, that's really a leak in the gas itself, so that would be detected. You know, you'll probably get more, you know, from, more odors from the, that's an odor, odors from the trees and all the landscaping that's directly behind there. But any smell that you have of the gas, that would be a leak that, that would be detected. And the price signs, we did, I believe, we did send that in, I'm not sure why, if, why you haven't seen that. These are LED signs, so it's like the newest level of, of quality of signs that, that are being used. They can be tweaked as far as how bright they are. That's something that we, we've worked with, really closely with our vendors on that. And as far as the size of these signs, they're ground monument signs, and the state dictates how large the, the name of the, the fueling company and the numbers have to be. So it's all, all within state regulations as well as complying with the sign ordinance for this development. And I think that is... Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I believe that the sign was on the package, but it wasn't in the, there was no rendering showing the sign, like you did the architect's rendering where the sign, you'd see it from the street, how it would look, but they showed just that diagram of the way the sign looked without a rendering, architect's rendering. Yes?
If I may, I just wanted to hit a couple of the questions. They're sort of overlapping between us as master developer and Chevron. Since we're on the subject of signs, though, what's proposed? The, the corner entry treatment, the sign you see in that rendering that says City of Eastvale, that sign wall itself, that element, is meant to carry through all of our other monument signs. So in the Chevron case, up north, doesn't work on your screen, in the upper-left corner, where you see the three purple trees, just to the left of those, that brown area, there you go, that is where the Chevron price sign monument is proposed. And we took this a little further than normal as far as a sign program. What we're intending, do you have the black and white site plan? It might show up better.
If you're talking about the pointer, it's not gonna show up on the television. We have to do that.
No, I was just hoping the, it doesn't really show, okay. You can go back to the colored. So the, the monument self, the monument signs themselves, what we're proposing is a framework that plays off of that corner element wall. So in essence, you have two pilasters that are about seven feet high, that are stone veneered, and those, from those pilasters, a, a wall continues off of those, and then the sign itself is perpendicular to the street. So the sign's parallel to the street, the wall is parallel, the sign is perpendicular to the street, coming out between those two columns. So that basic framework is what we're proposing at all of our monument signs. And at the north and south ends of the corner wall treatment, we have a similar monument sign for the retail center itself. So we'll have two of those, and then like I say, Chevron will have theirs at the north, and then they also have one on Schleisman, about where the third red tree is, just north of that. So they're intended to be very dressed up. They're not just a typical sheet metal can with a plastic face or a digital price sign. They're, they're very dolled up, if you will. So hopefully that addresses the signs. Commissioner Charleston, you had a question or a comment about the west elevation enhancing that somewhat. I'd also like to point out that if you look at the plan there, from the west elevation to the property line, that green and landscaped area is about sixty-five feet in width. So that whole area, which right now is just shown in green, if you look at the landscape legend, there's intended to be a whole series of drought-tolerant type planting in that area. So that will help enhance your elevation, and then if Chevron can go further on that, I'll leave that to them. There were a couple of comments on the outreach and the notification. You know, it is a little unfortunate in our public system. I mean, the way it works is the notifications go out, the homeowners get those. We understand, and you see it all the time, a lot of people can't make evening meetings and that sort of thing, but, you know, it was done originally, it was done again for this MDR. So if a person really had a concern, like any of those four houses, if they really had a concern, I would think they would be here because they've been noticed twice. And when we did our outreach back in two thousand and eighteen, everyone was noticed for that. So really, that was three times around. And I'm not saying it wouldn't be helpful to have maybe done it again, but we all have to play our part. As far as the trees at the north, Gary had a good explanation of it. That strip is falling to us as master developer to plant. We'd be willing to, I think they're called out as twenty-four inch box on today's plan. We can go up to a thirty-six inch box, maybe a forty-eight inch box. Also work with our landscape architect. Those are, those are two types of pines that are called out currently. We could possibly go back and find a quicker grower and a larger box to begin with so that those could infill quicker, if that would help the situation. There were a couple of comments about property values. This is always a tough one because any residential property next to a commercial development, you'll invariably end up in this situation, especially if the houses have been there first and the development comes in second. Really doesn't matter what's developed commercially, there's always the argument that the property value is diminished. In this particular case, and I'm sorry, I need a big drink of water. The Palopolous Nursery, having been derelict for the last ten, fifteen years, I would think if I was a resident living north to have any type of new development, I think, I would think I would appreciate, oh, thank you so much. You know, the fact that the, the nursery had been derelict for so long, and I know there were transits on the property, there were multiple buildings that were dilapidated and people, there was a caretaker who was legitimate and supposed to be there, but there were other transients and people on the property all the time. So I would think anything that comes in as new development compared to that derelict property would be a real positive as far as property value. And then lastly, light pollution, there was some conversation about that. Oh, that and the gas fume monitoring. I believe in the EIR, when this originally went through and the gas station was a part of that and that analysis, the GHG and all that would have picked up on the gas station. So as far as any fumes and that sort of thing, I'm sure there are monitoring stipulations and conditions of approval that came out of that. And then light pollution, well, realizing we have residents to the north on the entire site, the entire commercial site, we as developer are proposing lower than normal light poles. We're going about eighteen feet versus a typical thirty-three foot. So that right there takes everything down, and then they're all LED these days. So the light heads themselves have internal shielding, so you don't get the glare coming out of those like you used to in the past, like our center out here. So the fact that we'll be lower, Chevron's case, as far as site poles, they won't really have too many on that parcel itself. Most of theirs would be canopy lighting, which is all shielded, or building lighting, which again is, excuse me, shielded. So those are my comments back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on, Rick, 'cause I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
So I guess the picture I was looking at is what you had. So when you look at that rendering that you gave us, the sixty-five feet looks awful close to the city, to the panel. If you look at that, and you look at the entrance, you look at the station, and you look at the building, and you still see just a little bit of the side of the building. Now, sixty-five feet, you're right, it's, it's a, it's a decent amount of width, but adding a couple of windows in there, even if they're fake windows, would make that look much nicer. You guys did it at the bank. It really does help when people are looking at it. And I guess to, to touch on, you know, and I'm gonna take your word that if you had a positive meeting with the town hall, I'm good with that. And I am quite disappointed that if there are four residents that are backed up to this project, I can't imagine why they wouldn't be here. And, and I'm not gonna try to make excuses for them, but if they're worried about it, they should be here. We have a lot of people that come to these meetings and voice their opinion, and the project is on the other side of town, and they're doing it on behalf of the city. So I, I'm kind of surprised at that. I would have liked to see, my notes were, if you had twenty people there, I was real curious, how many of them were that back, back wall to the, to the commercial property? I would have liked to see that, but honestly.
From my recollection, there were a couple, but they were further east up Mississippi. They weren't right at the corner. And then there was scattering through the, I'll call it the northern and more easterly portion of the track. And, and just one clarification on the sixty-five feet. If you look at the colored site plan, the, right at the corner from property line to the curb, that green landscape area is twenty-five feet wide. So the sixty-five feet is at the northern edge between property line and the, the actual C store, just for clarification.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I'm gonna close public hearing again? Or did you want us to make, make one more comment?
Just address...
Okay, we'll reopen public hearing.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
To the comment on the west elevation of the, of the convenience store there, yeah, so it, it is sixty-five feet, and also if you can see where those three purple trees are, my understanding that that brown right there is gonna be a... brown right there is going to be a landscape berm that's elevated as well. So that'll help with some of the screening. But yeah, we can definitely work with staff to make some improvements on that side of the building. I have used the false glass before. Personally, I think what we've shown works a little bit better. That glass sometimes can be a little bit of a maintenance issue, whereas the trellis with landscaping, it's a lot easier to work with. And I think it looks better. That's a personal touch.
We've used the false glass, and they just put the outline to it, it looks like a window, and then they painted a different color, and it really just kind of sets it off. It's just more design stuff.
So we'll work with staff to make some changes to that. And then one, two other things I wanted to point out with that as far as the light pollution. I was taking a look at the section drawing that shows the neighbor on the rear where we put, where we're going to put lights on the back of the building, it's actually going to be below the height of their block wall. And all the light on the rear of the building, it's all going to be washing down, not out. So that should help mitigate any of those concerns. And the price sign, just wanted to point out, the monument, the overall height of the monument looks to be, I'm just doing a quick takeoff here, looks to be about six or seven feet. The sign itself is four foot tall by about eight foot wide. So I just wanted to give you a little information on that.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. Discussion commissioners?
I have one more question for staff, or just for the board to our legal counsel.
Mr. Charleston?
We talk about this every time we talk about, and since we're talking about beer, alcohol being sold at this facility, when we talk about this, I always worry about precedents that we set. And since we have other businesses that are there that ask for it and that we denied it, and we had various good reasons on why we would have denied it, but I'm struggling with walking a hundred feet across the street and saying it's okay now. And from your point of view, as we set precedents when we make decisions like this, I know we can say yes to anything we want, we can say no to what we want. But at what point do we expose the city to risk where somebody would come in and say, you let them have something that we can't have, and that's not fair?
Yeah, I mean, I think in this case, these are, you know, the planning commission has been presented with a different project than it has reviewed in the past. It needs to consider each project individually and on its own basis. And, you know, there's different uses, different situations. And each application that is being presented, you know, is to be considered on its own merits and under the guidelines that are, you know, set forth in the city code. So to a certain degree, yes, the commission or the council in approving something like this is setting, you know, precedent. But, you know, that precedent can be narrowly applied to, you know, that specific application and that specific use and that specific location. And here, the council is being presented, or the commission is being presented with, you know, a different application that is never considered before and needs to consider it on its own merits.
If I may, I want to focus his question a little bit more. We have several gas stations that have convenience stores. We have the Chevron on Limoneide, we have, we have the Seven-Eleven at Schleisman and Archibald, they have a convenience store there, don't they? And we have, does a gas station on Riverside and Hamner have a convenience store there also? Are they all open twenty-four hours? The gas stations open twenty-four hours and the convenience store open twenty-four hours? Do we know? And what are the hours of alcohol sales allowed in those particular facilities?
So we can have the store manager from the Chevron across the street, but let me speak, let me answer that question from the zoning point of view. All of them were subject to a conditional use permit and all of the conditions of approval are identical. So that's it.
Do we know what the sales, okay, so if she says what they sell, they're allowed to sell alcohol, they're all the same that we know of right now?
Saying the use hours, there was.
Sales of alcohol.
Right, so let me, let me go ahead and bring that sales order up now, if you wish to, if, I don't know, the public hearing's still open technically, but.
You'll have to reel the public hearing, now it will temporarily be real. Please, give us your name and.
Hello, good evening, Jared. How you doing, how you guys doing today?
Good, what's your name and who you with?
My name's Christian, and I manage Chevron across on Limoneide.
Okay, thank you, just for the record.
We sell alcohol from six AM to two AM.
Okay, thank you very much.
There you go.
It's now, public hearing is now closed. Okay, so, did that clarify anything for you? Okay, do you have any other comments, Mr. Lee?
With all due respect to Commissioner Charleston, I do have to kind of disagree with you on the reasons why people can't be here tonight. There could be multiple reasons, we don't know that. We can't make assumptions for those residents, those four residences. They could have, very well have a really good reason why they can't be here. So with that said, I am, again, still concerned about the community outreach that was done. If I'm, as a planning commission, we have the duty to represent our residents. And if I'm the homeowner, or if I'm buying a home that's behind a gas station, I will have concerns. And to just dismiss that, I think that's very concerning. I think they might have legitimate reasons as to why they will oppose or why they will be in favor of a gas station behind their lot. However, we don't know that because you didn't ask. And I think the burden of proof shouldn't be on the residents that are currently living there, it should be on the applicant who's proposing a new use or behind those residents. So for that reason, I am very concerned that we're just poo-pooing and just dismissing concerns of our residents and the community outreach for this particular parcel. And plus, not just for those four parcels, we do have communities that have sent in letters that said they are in opposition of this. So to kind of just dismiss in general of all their opposition is very concerning. So that is my comment on this one.
Thank you, Commissioner Laney, do you have comments? Or concerns?
Yeah, just one other thing, I mean, just going through some more of the renders tonight, I'm just, I'm curious, I mean, I see the canopy and it has a nice pitched roof to make it look less gas station-y, if I can say that. And, you know, and from this render that was provided, you know, you certainly don't really notice a gas station when you're, I guess, when you drive by. The building itself, though, to me, just, it looks like a gas station. And if that much effort was put into the canopy, I'm just curious, if nothing else, I mean, I'm just curious if a similar treatment to the building was also considered, having a pitched roof like that as well in the building? Because to me, there's a disconnect between the canopy and the building itself.
Thank you. Commissioner Hovey, you have concerns or comments?
Yes, I too have an issue with the outreach for the residents. And there can be many reasons why people don't show up. There are lots of meetings in Eastvale and, you know, families are busy and anything could come up. We do have a stack of letters here, so there are people that are concerned, but ultimately it is up to us to make sure that we are doing what is right for our residents. And, you know, honestly, I'm disappointed with our city and that this would even be considered there behind our residents. I am disappointed with Lewis for wanting to put that there. We've had a great, long relationship with them, and I just don't think that the best interest of our residents is being put first. And that is my comment. And if the commissioners are going to pass it, I would like to add some conditions about the height of the trees behind it. I would like a super buffer to protect the residents. And I don't know if there is some sort of condition that you can put on the size of the trees or the height of the trees that must be put there. But ultimately, I want what's best for the residents, those residents that are right there, whether they are here or not, because that is our job.
Thank you. I have concerns with this gas station going in this area too. It just doesn't seem to be the ideal place where a gas station, too close to the residents, it'll be a nuisance. And if they're not, the residents aren't here, and for all I know, there might be somebody out there that just doesn't want to say anything, but we can't, our job as commissioners is not just to think about today, we have to think about the future. There's going to, there could be other residents that are going to move in later, we have to consider them also. Some of those properties are rentals, maybe next year, somebody's going to buy it and they're going to live there and they're going to, you know, if they are a resident or a renter, they might not get the notification and might go to the owner of the property rather than to the renter of the property. So that's a possibility too. But I have very, very much concern about the location of this gas station. It's just, to me, it just seems like it's too close to the residents there. If it was just a little farther away, maybe a building, another building buffering between them and the gas station, but it's just really close, I'm not, I have concerns, so. With that said, do we have a motion on this proposal? And we could go with, well, I think the major development review is a primary one because if it's, if it's not there, we, the gas station CUP will not have to go, and then the alcohol sales will not have to go. So do we have a motion? Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to deny the project, that staff recommended.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the project? Do we have a second on that?
A second?
We have a motion, we have a second, roll call please?
No.
Your mic's not on, is it?
Commissioner Charleston?
No.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
No.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
It's too close.
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
So do we have to go ahead with the CUPs?
Yeah, the CUP is, you should make a decision on.
Okay, I'll make a motion to deny the CUP for a gas station. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call please?
Commissioner Charleston?
No.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
No.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
Okay, I'll make a motion to deny the CUP for alcohol sales use?
That's what we just established, so that's all we need to do.
The gas station and the CUP for?
Same, it's the.
For the gas, alcohol sales is the same?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Okay, sorry. If we want to make some kind of adjustments or something, come back, that's another story. For now, it's dead in the water. So let's go on to item eight point two, project number one eight two zero zero three seven, tentative parcel map.
Chairman, members of the planning commission, the presentation will be done by Mrs. Emily
Let's take a five minute recess, please.
Okay.
Okay, can we reassemble again so we can start this meeting again? I think we need to have the sheriff out there with us to escort us to our cars after, no, I'm just kidding. All right, let's re-adjourn this meeting, means now re-adjourned. Let's go to item eight point two, and we have a presentation if I'm correct. Thank you. Eight point two.
There it goes. All right, good evening, chairman and commissioners. Before you this evening is a proposed tentative parcel map, map number three seven five three two. The applicant is Sandra Yavitz, who could not be in attendance this evening. However, she did provide a letter that was provided to the clerk and I assume was provided to you as well, acknowledging her acceptance of the conditions of approval as proposed. So this is a tentative parcel map. We have one four point eight acre lot, it will be subdivided into three lots of various sizes. The project location is at Schleisman Road and Hamner Avenue. Currently on the site is the ninety-nine cents only store and the land to the north of it is vacant, and those are the parcels that will be carved out with the tentative parcel map. The land use and zoning for the site is commercial retail with the CP C1 zoning designation, which means that any number of commercial service type uses could go on the parcels. However, none of those are being considered tonight and it's just a subdivision of land that's worth the planning commission's consideration. On the screen is the proposed parcel map, so you'll see that ninety-nine cent store and its parking lot will be carved out into one parcel and then two other parcels on the site. The parcel map does show a building there on this site that's speculative at this point for site design purposes. Any future development would return to planning commission for a major development review and any other applicable entitlements. Within the commercial district for the city, there is no minimum lot size. Lots just need to have a minimum of seventy-five foot width, which all these parcels do. And the sizes of the different parcels are shown on the screen, ranging between point nine and two point six acres in size. Because this is a discretionary action, it is subject to the Environmental Quality Act, but it is a minor division of land and these actions are exempt from further environmental reveal. Staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the tentative parcel map, and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Mr. Lee?
Did the applicant state why they're doing a parcel map without any development attached to it?
The project was originally submitted with development, but it's unclear whether that development would be a successful proposal. So at this time, I believe the applicant's position is to establish the map to allow either the sale of the parcels or to bring back a different project. But what was initially proposed is still being worked out between the applicant and staff to bring forward to the commission.
Any other questions?
I have a question. When I looked at the parcel sizes, I was kind of puzzled by that. Because if she, if we're not sure what project is coming forward, two point six seven, point nine, one point two three, why wouldn't it have been, you know, one point six acres apiece? And done like that? So there has to be a plan here that she has.
Right.
Doesn't make sense to what we're being presented.
Right, there is a plan, and I can say what was submitted, because application is public record, is that there's a restaurant with a pickup window on the corner, and the middle lot was proposed as a gas station. However, staff is not satisfied with the elevations and design of those buildings, and that's why they're not being brought forward at this time. And it may result in a change of tenancy for those buildings because we are dealing with corporate entities that have certain design styles. So until. So until a project is agreed upon between staff and the applicant that we feel we can bring forward, it's not coming forward.
I totally understand that.
Yeah.
But that makes it seem like this is a little premature.
Well, I would also, well, so there have been numerous conversations with the property owner. This very point was discussed not long ago in a room not many far feet away from where you sit right now, where we stated that she asked for permission to be able to subdivide the lots for marketing purposes, which I understand that is a regular occurrence that happens. The lot size and width and depth, that needs to be for certain, either a commercial with a restaurant or a commercial with a gas station, that's, that's known in the industry. So, but the caveat for taking this forward was that there could result in lot line adjustments. It in no way foreshadows or approves any type of tenancy. The applicant is aware or aware of that. So I would offer that to the commission as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner? Commissioner Laney, yeah, question? Commissioner Hovey, you have any question?
Oh, may I add one thing that I forgot to mention in my presentation? There are conditions of approval on a parcel map, and those conditions include a traffic signal being installed at the intersection of Mississippi. And the applicant is contributing fifty percent of the costs for a median that would occur at some time in the future, and that median would be on Hamner Avenue when the other side of the street does eventually develop.
Okay.
Yeah, I read that, I thought you guys did a great job tying that in.
Okay, I have a question. So with this tentative parcel, parcel map, and the way she's laid it out, and she's not sure that tenant's gonna go in there, so it could quite possibly come back to us again, readjusting these property lines?
She could do a lot line adjustment, which is an administrative action. Really, what the planning commission is doing is deciding to create three lots out of one. But the configuration of those lots can be adjusted in the future through a plan check process.
And, and why the panhandle on the property? Is that so to meet the parking requirements for the restaurant that goes there?
I think that that shading is not the parcel stuff. If you're referring to the middle parcel and parcel two, those, it's kinda hard to read, but those lot lines do come out all the way to the street.
Oh, so it's like, kinda divided in half? That plot, that, well, cuz it's?
So parcel two does have street frontage for its full width.
Oh, it does, cuz it is deceiving, it looks like it's just a short little piece there. And the ninety-nine cent store, that's their own, they're just dividing it from the exist, the per property that now?
Right.
Cuz it says three properties and that's two, but?
It's one parcel now. Ninety-nine cent store owns all, or is sitting on one parcel that's all of it. And what this map would do is carve out two additional parcels from ninety-nine cent store.
So ninety-nine cent store owns the whole thing right now?
I can't say the ninety-nine cent store owns the whole thing, but we can't say the ninety-nine cent store is this, is the one development that's sitting on one legal lot at this time.
So they're leasing that land right now?
Actually, the ownership structure, I'm not sure if they're leasing to buy back or how, if they're, but what the case is with Sandy, I'd have to ask her that question. But I can say that it's the one, it's on one lot right now.
Makes sense. That's the answer, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Laney?
I just wanna make sure I heard you correctly. You mentioned that there's going to be a traffic signal potentially at Mississippi?
Yes.
What's the distance between Mississippi and Schleisman?
Oh goodness, I cannot read this, the scale that it's at, but if I recall, I wanna say it's five hundred feet. Thank you. I said, thank you.
It, it, did you hear the answer? Four hundred and forty-eight point seven.
Okay, any other questions?
But then there's also a line at Riverboat, right? Isn't there a line at Riverboat?
Yes, yes, that's a little part of it.
So the, the decision to place a signal here was based on the findings of a traffic analysis that was performed for a proposed restaurant and gas station. So if something, if other uses were to come in the future that are different than that, say it was an office building, the city would do a new TIA, a new traffic assessment, and see if there's any changes that need to be made.
I'm sure the residents would appreciate a traffic signal there. Cuz it's hard to get out of there during rush hour. Thank you very much. Do we have any cards for this?
Yes, we have one.
Okay, well then, at this time, I will open public hearing. Public hearing is now open.
Betty Wu.
Ms. Wu.
Good evening. Commissioners and the staff.
Ms. Wu, you have three minutes, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Betty Wu, and I'm a resident of Eastville. I'm just going to cite what I jot down earlier, rather than. We, the residents of Eastville, oppose the division or subdivision of parcel unless they are actual qualifying applicants that are residents' choices. The selected, the selected applicants should also have quality of providing extra, added values to the city and the community. Besides, just the revenue. In light of the city council's comments in the recent city council meeting and the city survey results, the city is in need of small office spaces. We already have too many pizza places. Although we don't have Pizza Hut. But I think we, we do not have to have every variety of the pizzas in Eastville. But we do need office spaces. And actually, a lot of neighbors in my neighborhood, they are renting small spaces for office spaces like in adjacent local and Ontario. So why can't we just have small space, office spaces for people can rent, doing business in this, within the city, reduce the commute and reduce the congestion, and reduce the air pollution? And this lot is located right next to the church. It's just, just a perfect location for a small office. And right now, I think the most important thing is we want to make sure whatever the applicants comes, we do not have to take, because there's only limited parcels available in the, within the city limit. We need to consider whatever the applicants comes in is in need actually fulfill what's lack of in Eastville. And we need to be smart using those land. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wu, may I ask you a few questions, please? Just to clarify, again, you said, we, the residents, do you have any affidavits?
I spoke to multiple.
Do you have any rap, affidavits, signed affidavits by the residents?
Not yet, but all the people, I wouldn't say hundred percent, but I would say at least ninety-nine percent of people I spoke to, that they were, said they were sending letters in.
Okay.
I do not know how many numbers.
We have some emails, but I mean, this is like a hearing, and we need testimony. And if you, hearsay testimony is not quite, you know, as strong as if you had an affidavit signed by people saying that you're representing them when you come up to talk. Okay, another thing, right now, wait a minute. You talked about, we don't need another pizza place, but this proposition here is just to subdivide the property. It has nothing to do with a pizza place. Could you bring up the list of qualified commercial retail? Okay, see on the list there? One of those down there towards the bottom is professional offices. So even though we're dividing this, a profession, office building can go in this spot. But we, the people of, are the, we, the commission and the city council of Eastville don't decide who gets to go there. The owner of the property is the one who has to get the people to come and build there, and we just approve it or disapprove it. Just like we did before with the gas station. We thought it was a nuisance to the community, so we denied it. So as long as it's on that list there, there's not too much we could do to keep it from going there. We, I've heard from a lot of residents that we don't need any more pizza places, but they still keep going in, as people still keep buying pizza, so. So thank you very much for your time, Ms. Wu.
I think daycare center probably makes, or being similar to the.
That would be nice.
Small office location.
Problem is to get them to come and build and put a place there, and Eastville's another story, though.
That's correct, but on the other hand, is the city doesn't have to approve every applicant as they come.
Yeah, we gotta have a reason.
We share the reserve and make sure.
You're timed up right now, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
We can't go into discussion right now. We could talk after, though, Ms. Wu, okay, please? Thank you very much. So I will now close. No more cards?
No, but for the record, we did receive five letters of opposition, which have been emailed to you.
Yes, we received those. Thank you. I'll now close public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Do we have any discussion by the commission on this proposal? Commissioner Charleston? Commissioner Lee?
So just for the record, as a front of state, with other general plan amendments or zoning ordinance changes and so forth, you know, I, I understand for financing reasons why people and applicants do this, but we seeing projects that come in without developments attached to it. So just, just, I wanted to say that in record, cuz I keep saying this over and over again every time we see these projects.
Commissioner Laney?
No.
Commissioner Hovey? I don't understand why they're, wanna do this now, but I don't see any reason why they can't do it right now. They're, I think they're hamstringing themselves. But anyways, do we have a motion on this proposal?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve project number one eight two zero zero three seven. Do we have?
Second.
A second, we have a second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to item nine, commission business. Item nine point one, one-year review of the drive-through operation on pad two, Miguel Jr.'s in the Eastville marketplace. Do you have a presentation?
Yes, chairman, members of the planning commission. As you know, this project was approved previously by the planning commission. There's conditional use permit and a major development plan review. You can see where it's located there in the shopping center on Sumner and Limonite. And staff did go out to the property to take some photographs of the finished building and some of the landscaping you can see has grown in. Just to outline, on the black and white side plan, that's the configuration of the lot. And so the red arrow is indicative of how you would enter into the drive-through aisle. And you can see that the number of cars there are within the stacking requirements that were issued by the planning commission. But there is a condition of approval that says that if there was any automobiles that were in the drive-through aisle that were in excess, that they will provide two parking spaces and then have an employee taking orders on a tablet. So this is the site plan that shows where the two parking spaces are. And here is the nighttime photographs of where the parking spaces are located. And just the sales data for the Miguel's, and you can see it's, it's popular. And some additional findings when staff did their research, that we did not have any complaints or reports of any issues with vehicle stacking. In speaking with the store manager and, and doing site reconnaissance, it's just determined that we are definitely satisfied with the level of vehicle stacking. And that at this time, the planning commission, oh, excuse me, there's one more photograph of the drive-through entrance that's taken during the daytime. But at this time, it's staff's recommendation that, that there would be no changes to the conditions of approval for the project, and it should stand. And just a couple more photographs.
Okay, thank you. Does there any questions by the commission? Any questions? Commissioner Laney? So what do you need from us, do you, you don't need a proposal or anything? You just need to, should I ask commissioner?
Well, I believe there is a public comment.
There is a public comment?
Yes, we have received one card from Michael O'Connor.
Oh. Michael. Okay, I wanna open public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Is this thing an hearing?
No, it is not.
Not a hearing, no. Okay, so there's no public hearing right now? You just make a comment.
Great, thank you. I actually live pretty close to this development. I'm in the Heartland States, just to the south. I do go to this plaza on a fairly regular basis, and I do enjoy my taco plate at Miguel's Junior. I have seen stacking twice that extended out past the driveway. I've seen no evidence of any tablet or anything else to do with that. That said, it doesn't seem to be a huge problem. But my concern is that directly to the south is a Mongolian barbecue place that's going in, has not opened yet. The two parking spots are very close to that Mongolian place. And I have seen, it's kind of tight for traffic in there. So my thought is that, I don't really have a problem with the conditional use, but I wonder what will happen when that next restaurant directly south opens, and is it gonna start to get a little bit too tight and weird in there? So my request or thought is continue that condition for an additional period of time and revisit it after that other restaurant's open. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And commissioners, do you have any opinion on this? Commissioner Lee?
Yes, I actually live, I live pretty close by it, and I frequent that shopping mall all the time. So I, I do agree with the gentleman that just spoke. So I have seen some stacking issues, and, and there are some, you know, I haven't seen the management come out and kind of address that in few, very few incidences I've seen. So I think it's, so I hate to just continue this for another year, but if the management is more proactive on it, I think that would, that would kind of solve that issue. But I, I do agree with the gentleman that I have also seen stacking issues do happen and that. Cuz it's a very tight corner, tight turn when you enter the shopping mall, and to go into that drive-through, if you look at the parcel map. So I, you know, we have seen some cars stacked up and block the entrance. But it's not a huge issue, per se. But, you know, maybe, maybe continue to monitor or at least request the management to be more proactive. I think that might solve the issue.
Okay.
I would agree, I would think staff could handle that.
So I'm gonna ask each commissioner, do you want, what would be the question? If we fine with ending the review now, how would I address that?
So the way the condition reads now is that they would come back within the first year and do an analysis of the stacking.
So no review is required?
Right, that, the condition doesn't go away, it's just the timeframe is on it. So if the commission is, if it's your desire, you can modify that and say, come back for a second year if you wish. You can modify it.
But so, but I'll note that the conditions regarding the other stacking conditions, requiring, you know, management to come out with a tablet if there are issues, all of those are remaining. And if that does continue to be an issue, you know, over the course of time, that can be handled through, you know, code enforcement or at the staff level of talking with management. And if it's an ongoing issue, you know, that it, that this item can always be brought back to the planning commission for a review of its, you know, of the conditional use permit and adding things. So the council or the commission certainly within its right to do another, or add another one year from today, kind of review, or kind of just leave the existing conditions and let it be handled at a staff or code enforcement level.
Okay, commissioners, I'm gonna ask you, do you wanna, are you satisfied with the review? Or do you wanna continue a year? Another year? So Commissioner Lee?
I'm satisfied with the review, and I will personally request. Uh, I'm satisfied with the review and, and I will personally, um, request staff, if the, the stacking issues do occur again, uh, then I'll, I'll, I'll work with the staff on it, on it, and then we can work with the developer.
Commissioner Charleston?
Yeah, I'm satisfied, I don't believe we need to look at this here.
Commissioner Laney?
Same.
Commissioner Hovey?
Same.
I'm satisfied.
So, uh, the, the recommended action is for the commission to determine that no changes to the condition of approval are needed for Miguel Jr.'s drive-through operations, so that's the, the action that we'd be asking for approval on.
Correct.
So if somebody wants to make a motion.
Should we do, we do need a motion?
Yeah, recommend making a motion, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that's what, I thought you just wanted a consensus or?
Uh, yeah.
So let's make a motion to?
Uh, approve staff's recommendation.
To approve stack? To approve staff recommendations? I have a motion. Laney, you gotta make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Like make a motion.
Okay, we have a second.
Second?
Roll call please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. All right, um, uh, staff report? Item number ten, staff report?
Yes. Uh, Chair and fellow commissioners, uh, we wanted to provide a brief update regarding the Vantage Point Church, uh, development. So if some of you may recall, in March of two thousand eighteen, the planning commission removed or approved a major development review for the Van, Vantage Point Church. In short, that development includes three phases, one, um, phase one with a worship center and some portable classroom buildings, uh, phase two with a children's classroom building, and phase three with the construction of the final main worship center. That development also included some public improvements, including the dedication of two additional lanes on Archibald Avenue, um, some roadway improvements, including construction of pavement, curb, gutter, driveway, undergrounding of some utilities, traffic signal relocation, um, some striping and storm drain improvements. Those improvements were to be constructed during phase one of that project. So as the city and Vantage Point Church were negotiating the public improvement agreement, as the agreement establishing the firm deadline as to the construction of the, those public improvements, also the agreement that requires or sets forth the bonding requirement and the surety requirements for, uh, those public improvements. As the parties were negotiating that, uh, agreement, Vantage Point requested some phasing, a phasing modification of those public improvements. The request was precipitated by some rising costs that Vantage Point was experiencing, particularly in the increased cost of steel, as well as some other costs, and Vantage Point informed staff that, um, with these rising costs, if it was required to do the, all of the improvements in phase one, there could be a significant delay in completion of the project or, or even, um, uh, jeopardize the project altogether. So Vantage Point proposed that the utility improvements, the onsite utility improvements, traffic signal modification, paving and necessary improvements to provide two northbound lanes on Archibald, some minor signing and striping and driveway improvements would be completed in phase one, with the remaining public improvements being, or being concluded, uh, at the end of phase two. So normally, if there is a change in conditions of approval or a major development review that was previously done by the planning commission, that would come back to the planning commission for consideration. However, in this instance, the, the proposed phasing was incorporated into the public improvement agreement. Because public improvement agreements are not within the purview of, of consideration of the planning commission, the item was taken directly to city council. So at the October twenty-third city council meeting, uh, staff was present, or staff presented the public improvement agreement, uh, to the city council. After listening to staff presentations, comments from Vantage Point Church, as well as comments from the public, um, the council approved, approved the, uh, public improvement agreement. And those proposed alterations to the, uh, the phasing of the public, um, of those public improvements. So we wanted to just provide this, the planning commission with an update regarding that project, uh, that it had previously considered. And, uh, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions, commissioners? No questions?
Comment, little disappointed. Because we have a lot of businesses that come into our city and ask to do things. And we try not to differentiate whether it's a church or whether it's a business or whether it's a housing tract. And we're pretty stern when we say, hey, we want buildings done, we want the sidewalks done, we want the block walls done because we want our residents to have safe walking paths. So, you know, I understand, I guess I would have been more curious to see they still did continue ahead with, you know, the roads, the pavement, what did they, what are they not doing in phase one, I guess that would be more curious about. But it was a big list, I mean, we, we went over this a lot. And this was brought up during the initial, uh, application. There were some of the things they didn't want to do, we told them they don't have a choice. So, just, just to cover it.
Uh, I, I will note, and that I did not include my update here, in the public improvement agreement, we are requiring that Vantage Point, bond for the entire amount upfront of the public improvements. And we have set hard deadlines in that public improvement agreement for the completion of all of those public improvements. So we have security, uh, within that public improvement agreement to ensure that all of the improvements that were required under the major development review will be done.
Thank you.
Commissioner Laney?
Sorry, just one, one question, I, I don't recall if you covered it, what, what improvements were postponed to phase two specifically? Just years?
It's, it's the, the, the Archibald is gonna be widened to three lanes, so it's some of the additional paving that's gonna be required for that and the striping that's gonna be required that, uh, as well as the, um, the movement of a traffic signal and and, oh, and some, there are some curb and gutter, gutter, um, things that are gonna be, that were postponed to the, the second phase, as well as some driveway approaches that were postponed to the second phase.
Okay, thank you.
Chair and members of the planning commission, if I may, we do have a couple of announcements to add after the, uh, presentation by our city attorney. Just so you know.
The presentation's over, go right ahead.
Chair wishes to speak.
Did he fill out a blue card?
He did not.
I will, right after I speak. Um, I wanted to take this moment to highlight one of our esteemed talented staff. Um, Jessica Cooper, our deputy city clerk, received her certified municipal clerk's, uh, uh, an award and certification. So, uh, it's something that she's been diligently be work, working on through, uh, their professional organization for the last two years, I believe. Um, and so it takes a lot of time and commitment on her part, uh, to do that, and so we just got word, I think this morning in the mail, that she is now, so now she can be Jessica Cooper CMC, and, and so, um, it's a new, uh, recognizing her skills and talents as a city clerk, so, uh, you know, it's another way of us developing and, and retaining our great talent and, and she's been working really hard at that, so. And soon we hopefully have all three of our city clerks as CMC, so, well, uh, Mark is a master CMC, but, uh, but, uh, hopefully Stephanie will be shortly behind this, so we're very excited about that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. One more announcement and or update, if you will, uh, we have in the audience this evening our community enhancement safety manager, Mr. Johnny Turfer. Um, I do believe that, uh, Commissioner Carlson has had an opportunity to meet with him and talk about a few things, but nevertheless, since there have been a couple of code requests, I do want to have the opportunity to have Mr. Turfer himself come and address the commission.
You made a mistake in giving it to self.
He's only called it once, uh, but we did meet out there and we talked about the issues at seven eleven, and I've had some success with the owner now. Um, and I think in the next week or two, you'll see some changes there, so I look forward to that. Hoping that by Tuesday or Wednesday, the graffiti will be gone. And, uh, so we're, we're working with him to try to get that addressed. And I just wanted to say hello, I know a couple of you, I don't know all of you, but I'm available if, uh, you have any, uh, community enhancement issues, code enforcement issues, I'm here to help and happy to, so just give me a call.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I meant to and I forgot, um, we have started doing proactive work. And so what we're doing, what we've been traditionally is we'd wait for a complaint, not wait, we're, we're busy, but we'd get a complaint, we wouldn't, uh, start a case until we got a complaint. Uh, now what we're doing is we're going out neighborhood by neighborhood and canvassing the entire neighborhood for all of the, uh, most serious complaints that people complain about all the time, the issues, so. Uh, those are things like RVs and dead lawns and, uh, you know, peeling paint in operative vehicles, uh, that sort of thing. So we go through a whole neighborhood and we'll get all of those, and we did two different areas, uh, over the last two months. Each of them were about a hundred and fifty or so cases, so that's a lot, yeah. And there's all the follow-up that goes with that after the fact, so most of those are closed, probably two thirds of them are closed, but there's still a third of them that we're working through. We're gonna take a little pause for the holidays and then right in January, we'll start over again and start working through all the different neighborhoods in the city. Yeah. Uh, sorry? Oh, the software, that's, that's a big thing too. So before, we kind of had the, you know, paper and pen for code enforcement, we had everything in paper files and our complaints came in digitally, but we really didn't have any management system internally. So we've gotten a new software program, it works really well, we can upload everything into that file, so we can have the pictures from the case, we can have complaints from the public, we can have, uh, letters from our attorney, everything goes into that digital file. It's easier to track, it's easier for the officer who's out in the field, and let's say they get a repetitive case where it's happening a second time. They can look back at the first case and according to our ordinance, if the, if we've already issued a, a warning, a notice of violation within a certain period of time, we don't have to do a second one if we've already done it, so having that case file and that ability really improves our flow and how we can enforce the codes. So it's, it's really a big improvement for us.
Very good, thank you, uh, and that, the next item is, uh,
One more.
Communications, oh, wait a minute, before, uh, before you leave though, um, we have, we're starting to have a really big, uh, littering problem on the roadways in Eastvale that I've noticed, because I walk the streets, I exercise and walk. And I know that's J C S D, but, you know, we need to put pressure on them or something to get them to, to get their landscape, yeah, Emerald Landscaping just doesn't seem to want to pick up the trash when they come and manicure, they just, they leave it, and, uh, and I've noticed it, it's not just like new stuff, it's old stuff that's been there a long time and it, something needs to be done and you're, you're our guy, so I. Thank you.
And you're seeing it in the, the media lens?
Yes, 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 yes. Yes.
So there's just a few more things, we won't keep you much longer, good evening, Chair. Members of the commission.
Giveaway there.
I do, you're not supposed to see ahead of time. Anyway, okay, let me start with that, so, uh, this afternoon, um, as Quarterly, uh, HDL comes into the city and then gives us the updates about what is happening in terms of sales tax in our city. So I wanted to share that with the commission, um, I have one of these written to you, so.
Yes, very good.
You can see that things are looking very good in Eastvale, so if you have any questions about that, either myself or Economic Development Manager Kimberly Wright, or obviously our illustrious city manager can answer any of those questions. Also, uh, we have your shop, Eastvale Bags, so those are just come out, uh, we have these available, so I wanted to be able to give you one of those as well. Um, and last but not least, just to let you know that the city has about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of funds that are available to help with the cost to install EV charging stations. So about a hundred and ten thousand of those funds are eligible through an AQMD, uh, another acronym that's difficult to pronounce, but the Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Review Committee, that's a mouthful. Nevertheless, two grants, um, so, uh, the city is also budgeting matching funds, so just so you know that the Lewis Retail Center and the Hamner Place and the Eastvale Gateway are all, we're all in negotiations to be able to bring charging stations to the city, so I wanted to give you that update as well. And that concludes my announcements, thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Thank you, that concludes, uh, staff reports and the commissioners' communications. Uh, Commissioner Lee, do you have anything?
Yes, and you have a couple, uh, one, um, it, it has to do with, uh, something that's near and dear to my heart, um, that is active transportation, a bike path, um, projects in our city, uh, so apparently, um, at the city council meeting just recently, there was, there were a lot of discussions regarding a, a grant project that we received from RCTC and that kind of triggered, um, I guess some back and forth and a lot of heated discussions regarding bike lanes in our city. So I, I think, you know, without going into the details and so forth, I think as a, as a writer myself and as someone who, um, you know, travels to work and seeing kids walk in bike every, every morning and in the afternoon, back and from home to school, I think we owe, owe it to ourselves to make sure that they're safe, so, um, in, in that case, you know, we, we have an opportunity to go after funding, get funding, um, and install a lot of these infrastructure projects, um, related to bike path, um, infrastructure. Um, it's, the, the way, um, the grants are written, you know, you propose something and then, uh, you, you, when, once you receive it, uh, you get, you enter into a contract agreement and you implement those elements, but I think, uh, so that's what was kind of going on at the city council, uh, just recently. And one of those element was a road diet, I think, I think that's. Yeah, so it's, it's a politically very hot topic, and I fully understand that as a, as a professional, uh, who's working in this field. But there are, I think, happy medium that we, we can reach, but at, at the same time, I, that, that kind of, um, dawned on me that, that we probably need, um, a, you know, a, a, a discussion taking place at the community level on this, because, you know, knowing where the state is going, where the region is going, um, we can't just say, we can't just say, okay, you know, we disagree with everything that Sacramento is, you know, um, telling us to do and then just be on our own and not, um, not implement any of the mandates or visions from, from our state. And there are nowadays penalties and funding that's attached to those. So as long as we live in the state, we still have to abide by to a certain extent of what, you know, what our state is kind of mandating. And, you know, active transport is one of them, um, but we can fit it, you know, in a, in a, in, in our setting, in our city setting, and we can make it, um, that's accessible or that's, 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 that's kind of reaching that happy medium between various folks. So, um, I, I, I kind of thought about this long and hard, and I think it might be a good idea to maybe establish some kind of citizen resident, um, like an-hoc or whatever committee or some kind of, I don't know, advisory group. Um, uh, that's consist of, you know, you know, um, not only the, the people who, like me, are advocates of bike, bike and pet, but also for, of, I, I would be happy to have folks that are the naysayers. Um, and kind of work through some of the, those projects, some of those hard projects that we have in front of us. And so, um, I don't know how the, uh, I, I'll leave it up to staff on how to kind of deal with this, but, you know, I, I would, I would love to, if, if staff can take this item to council and kind of establish this, love to have residents who are, you know, we have many civil engineers out here in, in our city, um, at least, you know, um, two, two civil engineers from my own agency, uh, lives in Eastvale. Um, and then we have city engineer from Riverside that lives out here, um, that's, that knows all about bike and pet. So there are, uh, uh, other experts that live in our city that can kind of, uh, work, work through this, so, you know, it would be great to have some of those residents who have that technical background, as well as some, some of the folks that, you know, just are passionate about not having those bike and pet projects in our city. And I'm, I'm happy to, um, you know, kind of consider that as well, so, um, if we, you know, I don't know what the makeup would be. You know, planning commission, safety commission, um, city council members, uh, and then on top of that, some of the residents. Um, I think rather than rehashing some of the stuff that we've done in our bike plan in our city, um, I think implementing, uh, or being consistent with our bike plan and then kind of prioritizing projects that we can agree on and bringing those projects along, I think it is, is, is. I think it is, is, I think we can, we can easily, uh, achieve that. So I, I, I don't know how to go about it, but I wanted to use this opportunity to kind of say my piece because this is a, this is a topic that I, that, that is, uh, very near and dear to my heart. So, um, you know, hopefully staff can kind of go back and kind of take a look at this, uh, propose something at the City Council. If City Council, um, is willing to have this dialogue and kind of compile this group, um, I'll be happy to lead that group, work with the, uh, folks that are in that group, um, and so forth, so, so that we can kind of achieve that, um, uh, you know, satisfying the grant requirements as well as, uh, um, kind of appeasing some of the issues that some of our residents and council members brought, uh, at the council meeting. So, yeah, um, I had to get that off my chest.
Feel better?
Thank you.
Realistically...
Anything else?
No, it's funny that he says that because, I'm sorry Larry to interrupt, but, uh, I was at a, a football function where there was a whole bunch of people there. That topic came up. And I, one of the biggest complaints we got from the residents was they were showing lots of pictures of how the bike lanes were gonna be. And half the people in that group that said, "I ride bike, but I will not ride in the lanes just because you paint a line on the street." And when we looked at the bike program, you know, two, three years ago, when they presented that, it had pictures of Glendale, it had pictures of Burbank, where they have individual lanes for the biker where he's much safer. And that was one of the biggest complaints we got from people saying, "If you're just gonna shrink the roads, you're not making it safer for the bike riders and my kids are told, 'Don't ride in the street, right on the sidewalk.'" So I, I think you're right. If we're gonna discuss this, we want to keep it going forward, we're gonna have to have better discussion about it.
Okay, let's continue with, uh, Commissioners' communications. Is that your comment?
That's my comment.
Commissioner Laney, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to mention that, uh, my agency, SCAG, um, has an economic summit that is coming up on December fifth. Brian's, um, registration fee would be free because you are a vaunted city manager. Uh, but, um, I could send an email out to staff to let them know, uh, details on registration and such.
Thank you. Commissioner Hovey, do you have a Commissioner communication?
Yes, um, just a couple of comments. Um, the, I still, I bring it up every meeting, but the, um, citrus from Sumner to Harrison, they kind of mishmash. There's no lines, there's just, it goes two lanes and then it goes into no man's zone and then it goes to Dead End. We're just looking for something there because it's, it's, um, it's not safe and it's a mess.
It's a free-for-all when you pass somewhere.
So I still don't have any clarity on that or if anything's gonna be done with that. Also, the arrows, um, on Limonite, you know, where, because of the Limonite Bridge, um, those arrows are still there to merge.
To merge right?
Yes. Thank you. And then, um, I'm not sure if anyone has looked at the Costco gas station, but that big, I don't know what it is. There's some sort of big building. Uh, but when you turn out after getting gas, you, your visibility is completely impaired and, uh, and there's a lot of traffic there. Uh, and so I'm not sure if anyone has looked at that, maybe removing it or, um, uh, moving it someplace else.
Is it temporary, builds it?
I'm sure it's not, but, um, that's why on one of the other projects, we asked for the trash to be moved to another place just for visibility. But that, um, because of the high traffic there, uh, it's not very safe. That was what I had.
Thank you. Um, also, I was gonna mention about the arrows, uh, but, um, and I just want to put on record, make sure that, uh, we need to do something about the excessive trash that's being accumulated on our roads. I mean, we need to confront, uh, J C S D and put some pressure on them or something. And, um, and we're not going dark in December. We are going to meet in December. It looks like we're journeying to December eighteenth.
Well, uh, right now, we have it scheduled to meet on December eighteenth unless you give us another direction.
No, that's, we have something there. We got, that's our job. Uh, but at this time, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and eat a lot. Uh, this meeting is adjourned.